Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out to the Prattville City Council. Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen Prattville City Council meeting tonight. But prior to our meeting, we do have a public hearing. We have two items on the agenda. At this time, Madam Clerk, we call a roll.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Call this public hearing to order. Our first item is an appeal by Ms. Oretta Rice regarding dilapidated structure located at eight sixty-five Branch Avenue. It's Ms. Rice, or anyone here to speak on her behalf? Come forward to the microphones, state your name and address, please.
My name's, uh, my name's Oretta Rice. P.O., Box six-eight-one-five-one-five, Prattville, Alabama. I live at the residence of one-seventeen B County Road four, Prattville, Alabama.
Okay, is there anything you should...
Okay.
Did I tell us, Ms. Rice?
Okay, what I'd like to say is, uh, I'm asking the, the city council not to tear down the house at eight sixty-five Branch Avenue. My sister and I, we're the heir, and we plan on restoring the house. And, uh, what happened was my son, uh, he was cooking and he started the fire, so the fire started in the den in the kitchen. So, when my sister and I cleaned the house, that's the only damage was done to the house, so it is fixable. So, we're gonna start off with the roof first, and then we're gonna repair the floors and replace the window. And my son, he didn't have insurance, so we're gonna pay it out of our pockets. So, we're gonna do all we can to do one room at a time and put the house back in order according to the code. And, uh, we just ask you all to consider not, uh, tearing the house down, because, you know, it's our family property, and I would like to restore it. And this is, uh, what this is.
Give it to the clerk, please. I think we have a copy, is that the letter that she... Does everyone have a copy of that before them? You mentioned your sister and then your family property. Is she the only heir, or is there other heirs that...
There's other heir, uh-huh.
Okay, so we've talked...
My sister and I, uh-huh, and other heirs, so she gonna come forward to and speak.
Who, who will actually be responsible?
Uh, both of us, Louis and I, my sister and I, will be responsible, Louis Given and Oretta Rice.
Okay, let me ask Mrs. Givens to come and put her name on record also as to parties that will be responsible.
Yeah, we're gonna be responsible.
My name is Louis Given, and, and, uh, I live at two thirty-five Primrose Drive. But we are trying to restore the house back in honor of our parents, and we want to try to complete the mission of getting it repaired.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Givens, for coming and putting your name also on record. As you all are aware, we have many of these throughout town, and I'm familiar with that property, as a matter of fact, I'm familiar with your family. Let me just say, we would take the appeal in consideration, uh, refer it to code enforcement, and probably have a formal resolution at our next agenda unless this council prefers to do something different tonight. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comment from either Ms. Rice or Ms. Givens?
What's your timeline, what are you thinking?
Uh, I would say maybe, uh, maybe one year or two years, we're gonna do one room at a time, so... And we have people to look at it and give us an estimate, we'll have what's gonna cost us, you know? We're gonna borrow the money of what we're planning on doing, you know?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other council members? Again, I, I can't say what a timeline will be. I'm gonna ask that you get with, uh, will you raise your hand, code enforcement officer back behind you? Get with him, uh, and establish some type of legitimate timeframe. And we would like to have something really, at least, before us in the form of a formal res- resolution at our next meeting, stating that time in a resolution. Okay, does anyone else have any comments? Mr. Chairman.
It, it almost, it, it seems like it would also be, uh, helpful if you talked about the exterior separately from the interior. If the exterior is like this two years from now, that's a problem, in, in my opinion. If the exterior is taken care of soon, the interior is not as big of a deal, it's not a public nuisance, or... That's just a suggestion, opinion, what have you, so...
Again, let me just say, we're gonna refer this back to the code enforcement officer and get, the logistics worked out with him, and hopefully have something back before us. As you know, like, it has to be, uh, where it won't be a public nuisance. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The second appeal. Before I go to the second appeal, does anyone else like to speak on, on this item? We closed the public hearing on that item. The second one is appealed by Mr. Ross Miller regarding the structure at two oh-nine J Street. Is Mr. Miller present? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ross Miller, I'm here, um, on behalf of code violations placed on our property located at two oh-nine J Street in Prattville. I'd just like to take this opportunity to apologize to the city and the residents of the overlooked neighborhood for the deteriorated condition, um, of this property. We also request that the council grant us a time period in which rectify the situation, bring the appearance of the house within code, uh, through restoring, restoration of the property. We feel that we can accomplish this with an end result of placing the house on the market for sale. Several proactive measures are underway to ensure timely restoration. Property currently under contract with, uh, local professional lawn service to maintain the grounds for the past two years. My company, Miller Restorations, um, I specialize in antique automobiles and antique trains. We have a business account with Independent Glass Company in Montgomery. And replacement glass is being measured to be installed by the end of April to repair all windows. Once this is complete, any boards covering the window areas can be removed. And we have been approached by several home contractors over the past several months interested in doing repair work. We've spoken to some of them, and we'll make, uh, a decision through estimates on which company to choose. Is our hope to have structural wood repaired or replaced and use vinyl siding for replacement. If there are any structural areas in question, I will consult with PWBA Architects of Montgomery, of which my wife has been employed for the past twenty years, and use their inspectors, which are good friends of mine, to come in and assist in that process. I've also spoken with my regular painting contract contractor that I use through First Presbyterian Church. His name is Neil Truesdale. And he's already been out and looked, and he anticipates no problems once all the wood repairs, uh, have been completed. The roof on this structure was replaced around the same time that the tornadoes came through the neighborhood in February of two thousand and eight. I have no doubt that this structure can be brought back to code and be a handsome member of the neighborhood once again. We ask your permission to proceed with these plans of restoration and that you postpone judgment of this property for demolition. My wife and I, we like the neighborhood, we have kept this property for sentimental reasons while maintaining a current mortgage. If it's your judgment not to grant this request and force demolition, it would most likely cause a financial hardship on our family from which we would not able to recover. My wife and I both work, have experienced several medical expenses through the years, which not allowed us to put the necessary resources into maintaining the J Street property. However, we have allocated, uh, current resources needed to comply with the city codes. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Counselor Chambers.
Explain to me what you were saying about the two-year maintenance contract. I've, I've been on the council two years now, and this was continuously before us with, um, you know, weeded lot.
The, the last, from last year through this year, I have contracted with Little Lawn Service, and they've maintained it, uh, last year and through this year. They haven't mowed it yet, they told me they were gonna mow today.
Okay, wha- what about the mimosa trees that are grown up so, so high in front of the house you can't even see the house? When, when will those be removed?
Uh, immediately.
Okay. And your timeline for completion of your restoration?
For the installation of all of the glass to, uh, fix all, and I've fixed, you know...
Not, you've already stated that, when do you expect to be completely finished?
I, I'm looking for ninety days to complete all the restoration on the exterior of the house to bring to code, if that's... That's, that's my, that's my timeline, bearing any unforeseen structural problems that may take a little bit longer, but that's, that's what I'm going to be asking my contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, does any other council member have any questions or comment? From Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller, this item also will be, we will refer to our code enforcement officer, we ask that you get with him. Also, like to have this item back before us in the form of a formal resolution on our next agenda, with the extension date, if any date is to be extended, as with the first item. Okay?
Do I speak with him about the extension date?
You may speak with him, and you can also speak with your council person in collaboration after the meeting. You can speak with him now, though.
Are there any other...
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have comments on this item, item number two? Public hearing on this item is now closed. We're ready to start our Prattville City Council meeting, ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for the invocation given tonight by Counselor Bowles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father, I come to you tonight to thank you for this day, thank you for everything you've done for me and my business, thank you for everything you've done for our city and all, everybody who lives here, Lord, I pray that you give this body wisdom, give us patience, Lord, and let us make the right decisions when it comes to this city. Thank you for the things you do for us every day, Jesus, now I pray, amen.
Madam Clerk, you call a roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. Character trait of the month is creativity. Approaching a need, a task, an idea from a new perspective. It's our character trait for this month. At this time, we have approval of minutes from the City Council. April first, two thousand and fourteen. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those minutes are swiftly and immediately approved. At this time, we have comments from persons regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged. Mayor, do you ever report?
Yes, sir, if I might ask for a form of privilege?
Yes, sir, you may.
Doug Mosley come up, he has something, uh, to speak about tonight with the council, and then also introduce another group.
Yes. As I emailed you earlier in the week, we will not be having a financial report tonight, we're having a glitch with our accounting software, we're working on getting that straightened out. And I'll have those emailed to you as soon as they are ready, as well as put on the website for any public. But we, I'd, right now, I would like to introduce, um, some people from AUM. Megan McDonald and Leah Dorsey coming up, as well as, uh, Dr. Kamikar and Dr. Deal. They actually just completed putting together, it's, uh, called a citizen-centric report. It's a very brief financial report of the city to give readers a very concise and clear picture of how the city's doing and things that are coming up and things that we've accomplished, so I'll let them take over and discuss the report.
First of all, we would like to say that this is a draft. We created this based on information in the comprehensive annual financial report for two thousand and thirteen. You're welcome to make any changes you feel are necessary. This is strictly a draft, like I said. If you look to page one, at the top, we added the city's mission statement along with the City of Prattville's logo with the AGA logo. On the sides, we added a brief table of contents and a list of the city's departments. Then beneath the picture, we added information about the history of the city along with what the city offers and how it operates. And then the fact and figure charts at the bottom give you information that are actually suggested by content guidelines. And that completes the first page.
Page two is titled, "How Are We Doing?" We used the annual reports provided by the Fire and Police Departments, which are great, they're on the city's website. We, uh, chose these categories to try to relate with the citizens. If you feel a need to include any others, feel free or change these. This is strictly a draft. We also included, uh, two thousand and thirteen highlights, we got these from the CAFER, and I also got some from the news section on Prattville's website. They had articles about some of them. The, to the right of the highlights is a picture of the splash pad, and below that is the capital improvements, we worked with Mr. Mosley, we used the CAFER, and I also used the news off of the city's website. And then a little fun fact there at the bottom left, and that concludes page two.
And page three is titled, "What About The Money?" We got this information from the governmental fund, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. As it, we, as you can see, we chose to show yours two thousand and eleven through two thousand and thirteen to show trends more visibly. We also added pie charts for the revenues by source and expenditures by function, and this reflects the two thousand and thirteen data. At the bottom, we're also showing the excess of revenues over/under expenditures and stating that the city had a clean audit opinion, and gives a link to the full comprehensive annual financial report on your website. This completes the third page.
The last page is "What's Next?", which is a forward-looking page, which we would like for you to put your personal thoughts and ideas for the city on there, which is why we have the draft there. By content guidelines, they say include annual events, so we looked at the calendar, included some events here that are very popular. Those were also found on the website. Picture of one of the parades, which I believe is the Fourth of July Parade, to try to put a little community involvement on the page. We also provided the Facebook link and the website link. The Facebook page we found is very helpful, y'all have a great Facebook page, whoever runs that. And, um, we wanna thank Ms. Lee for providing the pictures and Mr. Mosley for helping us on this. We very much enjoyed working on this, we hope that it helps your citizens and that this is something that y'all will find useful. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, does any council members have any questions or comment at this time? Counselor Bowles?
Um, this was a very well put-together draft, I really appreciate it, very informative. Your presentation was extremely well thought of, prepared. I appreciate that to your professors. Quick question, how long did it take you to do this?
We've been working on it since January.
I thought you might have put some time into it, it looks like you have. This should get an A-plus, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I am Dr. Deal, I'm actually wearing three hats tonight, thank you for letting me do this. I am the AGA Regional Vice President, AGA stands for Association of Government Accountants. And we have about fifteen thousand members, we have leaders in the audience tonight. But this report is what AGA and, um, GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association, is putting together for citizens to see how their governments are doing financially, how they're performing, how they're being accountable. Because was, as we all know, your CAFER, while it's well done, is not to be read by many people, but people like me who do research. You want your citizens to have the information, and the students took the information and put it in a four-page document, so now you can post this on your website, as well as you can also send it to the National AGA and be, if you hurry, the first city in Alabama to have yours posted nationally. So, there's an opportunity there for you as well. But I'm a citizen of Prattville, I'm a professor at AUM, and also an AGA representative, so thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Again, thank you, young accountants, for a job well done, professors, and all you all for taking time to work with the city of Prattville, again, thanks for a job well done.
Thank you.
Well, I might ask if they checked that fun fact, because it says the City of Prattville enjoys three hundred and twenty days of sunshine per year. I thought it's three hundred and sixty-five, and it's always seventy degrees, but I could be wrong on that, but, um, we can validate that later. But, um, well, councilors, just a brief, um, review of some things we have coming up. Uh, April twenty-sixth, there's our annual Bark in the Park event at Cooters Pond, hope I'll see everybody there. City Fest, I think, is one of our annual favorites around here, kicks off on Friday, May second at six forty-five behind City Hall with the street dance, uh, the Tip Tops will be back again, they'll be playing, and it's always a good time, and food galore, so I hope I see everybody there also. Saturday, May third is Main Street, um, will be filled with booths, and there will also be attractions, a child's play area, more entertainment on the stage out back, which leads me to the Youth Arts Award. I don't know how many people have ever been to one of those, but it's really good to see the whole families that come out, um, to receive those awards. But at one P.M., uh, awards for our Prattville youth which, uh, whose artwork will be on display at the Art House. And just a little tidbit of information there, the Art House is named after a, a former fire chief, Herman Scott. But, uh, the, it's run very well by, by our staff here in, in the City of Prattville, and if you have time, please run by it. But I appreciate the Art Guild's efforts to encourage the talents of these young people as they, as they are our future, the future of Prattville, our partners of Prattville. During City Fest, our first responders have, have had a booth promoting their departments, as have they traditionally done during this event. But, uh, some of our new entries for the City of Prattville are environmental works, um, departments, uh, that'll be added this year, and so be on the lookout for this, for their displays and their promotional efforts. Very proud of their hard work, getting ready for this opportunity to promote themselves along with educating our citizens. Do need to also, uh, give a thank you to Lois Reynolds and her family for the millstone on display in front of our Heritage Museum, right here in front of, uh, right beside City Hall. This millstone was possibly used by our own Daniel Pratt at one point in time. Also, another thank you is our engineering department, which, uh, built the mound on which it rests for our future generations to, to view, but, um, while we had so many others to work on this project, got this project started, like our Creek Committee, our Heritage Association, so many other ones that have helped get that millstone to the point that it is, I hope that you do have time to, uh, find time to stop by Heritage Center and, and, um, and take a good lo- hard look at that, and just ask yourself, uh, how did they get it down into the creek, because that is one heavy stone. In closing, I'd like to say thank you to all who have had a hand in the resurrection of this millstone. With that said, I'd like to also wish AUM a family-filled Easter Sunday. Besides that, Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor, does any council member have any questions or comments for the mayor?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes, Starnes.
I'm sitting here. I, first, I want to applaud the police chief and Carl Wilson for bringing these two, um, houses that are dilapidated. But I attend the First United Methodist Church, I've sat here for two years, and I've asked consistently, why isn't that, the house across from First United Methodist Church on our agenda? I'm tired of waiting for this. What, what's the issue with this?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, um, the owner has, uh, taken out some building permits, and, uh, he is, um, almost at a stage ready to get started on that. I am closely monitoring that, and, um, by next council, I can better answer some of your questions by next council meeting.
Because I know this has been going on for three or four years, and it's unacceptable. I just, and we, we have other people been brought to attention, I think we need to do something to move forward with this.
I most certainly do agree, I've, um, I have been working on it, uh, staff has been working on it. One of the little differences, and, you know, and all properties have some type of sentimental value in some shape, form, or fashion, in my opinion. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, you know, family members have previously owned these, these, uh, other structures that were talked about earlier. Uh, one little difference is here, uh, that this is, uh, this one house that you're talking about is in the, uh, downtown historic district, and, um, the, the easy thing would be to have it demolished. But there's a lot of, um, uh, there's some historic, um, significance to this building, uh, we have been trying to work, uh, to get this removed, so I think you'll see some, some progress in the very near future. And if not, uh, and I have already explained to the owner the procedure on it, that if, uh, you know, if there is not some kind of movement, and right now, on paper, there has been some movement. Uh, there has been some minor movement of, uh, several months ago around the house. Very minor, but, uh, on paper, there have been some permits pulled on it. Think that, um, uh, first part of next week, I'll be glad to send this, this body a, um, email out, giving you a little better update on it. But, uh, rest assured, I'll be glad to give you a report at next council meeting, and you will, you will have some timelines.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor, because not only it's been three years, but also that's a high visibility.
It's a gateway into the city.
Yes, sir, and I just don't think it's acceptable to keep hold on this. I'm sorry, and...
I totally agree, I totally agree, it's, uh, um, we, the, the, the ball is rolling on it, it's moving very, very slowly. It's, it's, um, as I've tried to describe, it's, has a little difference because of the historic significance behind it. And, uh, it, and from my understanding, and I really, I can't say I've ever been on the property. I know I haven't been in it since, uh, since it's burned, but, uh, the, my understanding is, is, is mostly the outside, it's not as much on the, on the inside. And, uh, there, there was a little bit of a slowdown, you know, there in the beginning, because it, it was, um, my understanding, an arson case, and but there again, that's not a true excuse, because it has been just a little over three years. Uh, but we, we are working on it, and, uh, so I think you'll, you'll, um, one of two things, there will be a timeline on repair, um, from this individual, or a timeline on, a resolution should be brought before you guys, where the city will end up, uh, repairing it if this council decides to move in that direction. Or else, um, and of course, with, the city wants to fix it, then there's a, um, a, um, there's a mechanism for the city to recoup the funds that are put in it. Of course, then the city would also have the option, if it's so deemed fit, to have it, um, demolished. But, uh, I think on that, and I stand, uh, to be corrected, but if, uh, I think it has to go before HPC. But I think on that, and I stand to be corrected, but I think it has to go before HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, for it to be demolished.
Well, I'd just like to see it fixed. I mean, it's a beautiful house that could be fixed and, you know, but I'm tired of coming out Sunday morning and see a burnt building that we're just sitting on.
I agree. And you know, not only is it just one church area, I mean, you know, is Daniel Pratt set up quite a, quite a few of those churches. You have the four there on the corner and then you have another historic church halfway down between that house and the, and the courthouse. So I mean, there's, that is a gateway to our community. It's, um, we are on the same page.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Bowles?
This is not quite on the same subject, but I want to say thank you for bringing that up. Very good political answer. The true answer is, is because of the person who owns it.
Well.
But going on to my issue, and it's nowhere near as big as that issue, but what do we have to do to get our garbage picked up?
Well, how about give me a little more information because if.
Okay. When is, what is the ordinance? What time do we have to have our garbage on the curb?
I buy ordinance at 7:00 AM.
Okay.
The morning of.
7:00 AM, I'm sitting out there. And I'm putting my garbage out because I have to be at the store at 7:00, but I got there at 7:05 this morning. Garbage truck blows by as I'm putting my garbage out. And I leave for the council meeting tonight and it's still sitting there. Now, this is an ongoing problem with my house. If it's going on in my house, it's going on with other people's homes. Who is in charge of the sanitation department right now?
Uh, we, we have our interim director in there right now and he's here and we'll make certain that it does get taken care of. And I know you've called several times about this and we'll make certain it, we find a resolution to it, which one of the things that, and there again, not trying to come up with any kind of excuses or anything, but we are also trying to change some of our routes. Now, some of the trucks that you might see come by there because of the location of our sanitation department might be going to their respective route.
They come by the house 20 times a day. It's on 31 right beside the dump. You know, I didn't have this problem when we had the interim with Mike Whaley on here. It would happen before that, never happened, now it's happening again since he's not on.
Well, notes have been made and I'm.
And there again, if it's happening to me, I'm sure it's happening to my constituents.
There, there's, you know, the sanitation, I mean, and really all of our departments do a great job. There still, we're going through some changes. You know, we've, and I could stand here and give you some, some excuses. We've had some breakdowns. We've also, you know, part of the human element, you're trying to get a full crew together. So I think Friday, instead of having five boom trucks out, I think we had three, which we're talking about garbage. I think Friday, we did have all garbage trucks running. But you know, it's, it's a common, it's a very fine balancing act, trying to get people and equipment together. And we are trying to fine tune the, the routes on it. So anyway, I, I want to, I want to say you won't have a problem again.
Well, tonight, when I get back, I will be in the suit and tie, throwing it in the back of a truck so the counties don't get it and the raccoons don't get in it. But it's getting to a point where I needed to say something from the dust about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council member have any other comments to the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a report from Council on Special Committees. Counselor Striplin? Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir. The Street Committee met on Wednesday, April the night to discuss our current projects and potential projects.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir. The building committee met. We discussed the demolition of the Glory Plant on Martha Luther King Drive. The committee wants to move forward with this project and this bid. And I'm requesting your support on, on the resolution number one. Thank you.
Counselor Chambers? Counselor Bowles? Counselor Boone?
We're moving to our agenda. Before you have a consent agenda, five items to be considered. Resolution number one is to set up public hearing to declare various weed license to be a public nuisance and order an abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution number two is to set a public hearing for a retail beer on or off-premise license and a retail table wine on or off-premise license for Baranco Enterprises doing business as Chappie's Deli. Resolution number three is to grant a retail beer license off premises only and retail table wine license off premises only to Lars Chardry LLC doing business as Shell Carps Ford. Resolution number four is to waive fee for the Otterton County Fair Organization during the week of April 15 through 19, 2014. Resolution number five is to authorize the mayor to make application for FY 2014 Transportation Alternatives Program funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation. We have a motion on the floor to adopt a consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Be in the discussion. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And these five items have been adopted. Would be in a discussion on any of these items on the consent agenda. All in favor of adopting these five items, signify by raising your right hand. And this consent agenda is adopted. Our regular agenda, resolution number one, is to amend the FY 2014 budget and to award bid number 14-005 to Woodland Forest Products Incorporated for the demolition of property located at 1030 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and the removal of materials resulting from demolition at a cost of $58,700. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to remove improvements placed upon the property located at 1030 Martin Luther King Jun- Junior Boulevard and to remove materials resulting from said demolition. And whereas 13 bids were let for said demolition, and whereas two bids were received in Woodland Forest Products Incorporated was the lowest responsible builder bidder with the cost of $58,700. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Prattville that fiscal year 2014 budget surplus is hereby reduced by $58,700. And the budget line item Engineering Department miscellaneous contract services is hereby increased by $58,700. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 14-005 in the amount of $58,700 to Woodland Forest Products Incorporated for the demolitions and said funds are approved and appropriated for fiscal 2014 budget line item Engineering Department miscellaneous contract services. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. For clarification, enjoy, if you still hear, correct me, should that be drive instead of boulevard? If we make that notation. Item number two, is resolution to implement the hiring process for one public works director. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council has identified the need for a public works director for the City of Prattville, and whereas the Public Works Division shall include the facilities maintenance, vehicle maintenance, urban management, sanitation, and wastewater departments, and whereas the public works director shall be an appointed position, and whereas the annual cost for said position shall not exceed $99,608 for salary and benefits, whereas the public works director is a budgeted position, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $99,608 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one public works director, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2014 budget line items, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life, life insurance, and FICA in the facilities maintenance, vehicle maintenance, urban management, sanitation, and wastewater departments. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item.
I just want to highlight one little thing, the salary. I just want to make sure we understand that's including the salary and the benefits. The benefits really add up, so it looks like a higher number than what they're actually going to be making. And so I know I'll be getting some phone calls this week on that number, but I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone else would like to have that information, you can get it from HR department. Any further comments on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Resolution number three, generally to an agreement with Larry E. Speaks and Associates Incorporated to provide preliminary engineering services in an amount not to exceed $63,615 net cost to the city not to exceed $12,723 for the resurfacing of East Main Street from US 31 to Shady Oak Lane, project number STP 08-7804. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface East Main Street from US 31 to Shady Oak Lane, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires preliminary engineering services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Larry E. Speaks and Associates Incorporated to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for 80% of said cost, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Larry E. Speaks and Associates Incorporated to perform preliminary engineering services for resurfacing East Main Street from US 31 to Shady Oak Lane in an amount not to exceed $63,615 net cost to the city not to exceed $12,723, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line item Capital Project Fund Miscellaneous Contract Services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. I so move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Resolution number four is to enter into an agreement with the Constantine Group Incorporated to provide preliminary engineering services in an amount not to exceed $65,293 net cost to the city not to exceed $13,060 for the resurfacing of East Main Street from Shady Oak Lane to McQueen Smith Road, project number STP 08-7806, parentheses, 600. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface East Main Street from Shady Oak Lane to McQueen Smith Road, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires preliminary engineering services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved the Constantine Group Incorporated to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for 80% of said cost, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Constantine Group Incorporated to perform preliminary engineering services for resurfacing East Main Street from Shady Oak Lane to McQueen Smith Road in an amount not to exceed $65,293 net cost to the city not to exceed $13,060, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line item Capital Project Fund Miscellaneous Contract Services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. I so move, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number five is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle and equipment from Urban Management Department. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicle and equipment listed below are hereby declared surplus of the Urban Management Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Dodge Dakota 2009, 2009 Husqvarna mulch mower, 2008 Husqvarna discharge mower. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle and equipment on govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Have a second. In order for this ordinance to be, be hurried tonight, the rules must be suspended. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Would be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance is adopted. That completes our agenda items. At this time, we will have comments from person present. Anyone would like to make comments on any other item, please come forward and state your name. Mayor, you have any closing comments?
There again, just like to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Counselor Striplin? Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir. I'd like to put on my AICC hat for just a second and thank the fire department for their help with our tremendous project. We couldn't have done it without you, so we really, really appreciate your help.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambers?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles? Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. The Fourth of July Committee met earlier today and we are already gearing up for the events that the city puts on for the Fourth of July. It is a Friday this year, so we are really going to encourage Prattvillians to stay in Prattville for the weekend and enjoy all the festivities we put on. So I am challenging you, my fellow counselors, and you in the crowd, as you're looking at your calendar and planning your Fourth of July, to consider staying in Prattville, enjoying all the things we put on. And I challenge some of y'all to come out and join me in the cardboard boat races.
Thank you. The next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 6, 2014, here in these council chambers. Again, thank all of you all for coming. As always, thank you, city employees, thank council members and the mayor for the job that we all try to do for this city. And we applaud you for what you do. If there are some problems and there need to be some things discussed with the administration to correct situations that may not be up to par, then I'm sure we will get together and correct those things in an appropriate manner. Again, thank all of you for what you do. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Meeting is adjourned.